Tim, you up? Ready to go? All right. Welcome, everybody, to the third Monday of the month. And Monday, November 18th. Better turn my mic on. Now can you hear me? Ready? Got it? All right, Monday, today is Monday, November 18th, 2019. This is the regular city council meeting for the city of Tegukay. Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe seated? Glad to see everybody out tonight. It's a little bit better crowd than normal. We just had an election last, two weeks ago, and the two gents got re-elected. So we'll be putting up with them for four more years.
Sorry.
Us three for only two more years, if anything doesn't change. Thanks to Walt for running and Carmen and who was it? Tammy, of course, Tammy. Thanks for putting your name out there on the line and running. Y'all ran very good campaigns. Let's see, let's start with a special presentation. Oh, I gotta go out there and do my little talking thing out there.
The hardest part of the meeting, when you have to read.
Yep, and I'll show my third grade education. My reading abilities.
Just give it a second, maybe a little. Okay.
I'm washing off my glasses. All right. Is it on? Are we on?
Child not bound.
What's the matter? Pulling paper in my pants or something?
No, you're good, you're good, Dave.
All right, let's see, item number 1A is a recognition of Adam Bradbury for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Adam, would you like to come on up? Adam just made Eagle Scout, resident of Tegukay, Troop 250. I'm gonna read the special proclamation and then we're gonna ask him what he did to deserve such a great honor. Okay, proclamation recognizing Eagle Scout Adam Bradbury. Whereas Adam Bradbury has proven himself to be an outstanding member of the Boy Scouts of America, and the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow him throughout life and will be a beacon to others of the leadership quality and commitment this young man has shown. Whereas we recognize his Eagle Scout project for the elderly residents of Westminster Towers Retirement Facility in building garden boxes thereby allowing the residents to plant and grow their own fresh vegetables. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and council of the city of Tegukay duly assembled to hereby congratulate and recognize Adam Bradbury for his achievement in becoming an Eagle Scout. It is our honor to have him as a member of our community. Signed, David L. O'Neal, Mayor, City of Tegukay, South Carolina. So Adam's gonna tell us a little bit about what his project was and then we'll have his parents come up and we'll take some official photos, okay?
So for my project, like you said, I built six garden boxes at Westminster Towers. I filled those with garden soil and last year there was a waiting list for the garden boxes and not all of the residents were able to get a garden box to plant their own vegetables. After the six I built this year, they had enough for every residence who wanted to participate in it were able to get at least a half a garden box.
Very good. Congratulations. I think I might be able to use those garden boxes someday. Either that or well more, I haven't decided yet. Come on up, parents, let's get some pictures. I know you're very proud of your son. It's quite an achievement. Okay, the next is the Arbor Day proclamation. Tim, you wanna come on up and receive this? Oh, wait, I got something else for you. This one here. Okay, Timbo, we're gonna do the Arbor Day proclamation. We're gonna plant a tree December 7th.
Sixth.
December 6th, even better, that's a Friday. It's gonna be a nice clear day that day. 10:00 AM. What kind of tree is it?
Red maple.
Red maple, all right. We're gonna do it at Trailhead Park. All right, Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas the city of Tegukay celebrates 29 years as Tree City USA, which recognizes the value of trees to the community and has adopted the act of celebrating the first Friday in December as Arbor Day. Whereas trees contribute to the aesthetics of our community and when properly cared for increase property values and beautify our neighborhoods and enhance the livability of our city through the filtering of storm water and air pollution. And it is the purpose of this proclamation on this day throughout the state of South Carolina to encourage planting trees and to follow the actions of J. Sterling Morton in 1872. Now therefore we, the mayor and council of the city of Tegukay, do hereby proclaim Friday, December 6th, 2019, as Arbor Day in the city of Tegukay, South Carolina, and urge all residents of the city to observe Arbor Day by attending Arbor Day celebrations in honor of all play-together Board of Directors at Trailhead Park. Right. Wanna say anything or did I already cover it though? That's it. Post it in a great place in your office. Oh, I'm sorry, come on here, Timbo, because we don't have any pictures together.
We don't. We've got a couple.
I'm sure you do. That's the dartboard. Can you turn this off? Okay, I'll leave it on. All right. Okay, item number 1C is the year-end department updates. We'll start with chief Hasty and fire.
Good evening. How's everybody?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing great, thank you. It's been a busy, not-quite-seven months. We hit the ground running and a lot of things going on. Department's in good shape. We'll just buzz through, I've got eight slides and we'll talk about some of the things and I'll ask if you guys have any questions. This is our calls by type. It's a pretty good graphic of what we've done and where they're at. Response stats are on the left side with a pie chart on the right, just to kinda display what the overall numbers are. These numbers were run up until the 31st of October. So we're on track for over 600 calls this year. The increase, we've seen about 11% increase this year over last when we compared the numbers between the two. The trend, obviously, we're trending up in rescue and EMS calls and fire calls are down just slightly, so fire prevention works. Training, this year and 2019 year, to date, we've logged over 3,000 training hours departmentally, which is an incredible number of training hours. Next year, the projections for next year are gonna go up. And part of that is we're driving some more training departmentally. We're specializing in some things to assist public works and utilities, confined space training there, or increasing our rescue technicians and abilities. So you see the numbers there, and we're also driving the number of training hours to get us to an ISO Class 1 training standard, which is 192 company hours on top of all the other associated hours we have to do every year anyway. So we're really driving the hours. So we're gonna be over 5,000, that's what we anticipate for the coming year. A lot of initiatives, you guys know, just like you, we're involved in a lot of different events. Some of our involvement is planning on the front end, firefighters, EMTs there, boots on the ground basically to provide services for the citizens that live here. You know, just a lot of community service events. EMS initiatives, some things that we're doing there. Obviously, our level of care is the same as it was last year. We're trying to increase the training at the station. We're trying to bring instructors in to provide the best training and education for our members in-house, which keeps us from having to pay overtime dollars for them to go out and get it. So we're trying to do that. Response, our response standard is there. We're working on automatic aid agreements at this point, which is getting us ready for ISO inspection next year. Education, obviously, is a big thing for us and I'll hit on that in just a few more minutes. We've got another slide about that. Education is huge, you know, us being involved in the community, anytime we have the ability to outreach is good. IEPs is instant action plan. You guys know that my background is pretty heavy in emergency management. Instant action plans are huge. We gotta have a plan for any event that we have to go to. So we're trying to address those up and address that every time we have some sort of event where we can adequately plan. Community involvement, we've touched on that. Training, the things that we're gonna do in the coming year, confined space, rope, vehicle and water training. Water rescue training, we've been short on equipment. One thing that we're doing now is we're trying to increase our equipment for water. We've got about 19 miles of shoreline above the dam and we've got swift water below, so we're trying to address those issues. The SCBA, you guys have been aware of that. Our SCBA are about three generations old and we're trying to get those lined up now. We're working with staff to plan to replace those in the coming budget year. So we budgeted for that. There's 22 air packs that we're gonna buy. We've got a number of bottles that are getting ready to go out of date. DOT has dates on them and they're getting ready to expire, so we've gotta purchase new ones. Initiatives, ESO. ESO is a software management program which helps us to drive many things. It drives training, it drives education for us. It's the ability to share information, reports and that kinda stuff specifically for EMS calls. We can pull up with a tablet and we can share that information that we've collected from the patient seamlessly with EMS when they arrive. So there's a lot of software initiative pieces there. We're looking to go to Mobile CAD in the first quarter of 2020, which is a computer in the truck. As soon as the dispatcher types it in, it'll come to us. So if we have a domestic incident or something like that, we'll know that before we actually get there. It'll also bring up pre-planned data, hazardous materials and that kinda stuff. We'll know about it before we get there. It'll come in the computer in the truck. So it's a huge step forward for us. Pre-plans and inspections, we join with Tom and his folks. We're starting to do some fire safety inspections on buildings just to make sure that we touch those every year, which leads to safety for our citizens in restaurants and businesses. Informational platform, IT has really helped us to build our IT platform this year, so we're able to share information seamlessly with city staff. Knox Box program, we've adjusted that and cleaned it up just a little bit with the Knox Box program where now we had two different key codes, which is bad. Two different Knox Box keys is not a great thing. All of our Knox Boxes now are the same as the York County key code, so if we have mutual aid coming into the city of Tegukay, we operate seamlessly together, which is a really good thing. Station 2, you guys allowed money to be put in the budget for an outfit to Station 2 last year, thanks to Charlie and some efforts there and Phillip and his staff. We've installed sprinklers at Station 2, which protects our firefighters. And we've put an alarm system in that building as well. We've made some bedroom adjustments, some living quarter adjustments, so it's a little bit more friendly for the firefighters that have to live there. So thank you for that. Staffing, we are up to six on each shift. We've got three shifts, we're at 24-48, and minimum staffing of five, so if we've got one out sick or one on vacation, we'll hire back to cover that, bring our staffing back to five. And we're looking forward to future promotion. We've got a lieutenant spot that's open right now. It's been filled temporarily by one of our firefighters and we'll do a promotion probably. We got a promotional process starting December the 5th, so that'll be in the new year. Education, we did an open house this year. They did an open house in 2017 when they opened the station. This was more in line with Fire Prevention Week and some of you guys came and I appreciate you being there. It was a great time, it rained on us. We got to do some demonstrations and displays, which was really good and we got to share a lot of information with the community, just fire safety type stuff, how to get out alive. We read, interact and educate. We've done some reading programs in the schools. Some of our firefighters have gone and read to the kids. And what a great time to get in and just enjoy the kids and share information. And that came right back around at the open house. Some of those kids came and they recognized the firefighters. So what a huge opportunity. We do station tours frequently. We try and leave the doors open and invite the public in. That's a big thing with me, you know, we want the public to be a part of what we do. So a big educational piece. Some of the city events we're involved in, July 4th Fall Festival, Veterans Day, Camp Cadet, which is a great opportunity. We spent a lot of time with the kids and the police department. What a great partnership there. Shop with a Hero, that's coming up very soon. National Night Out, those are all great things that we get to be involved with. The Read-a-Thon at the school, ride to school with a firefighter. We had a child at Gold Hill that read more than any other child in the third grade and that child wanna ride to school from the fire station to the school in the fire truck. What an awesome opportunity, you know? So just some of the things we do. Storytime, we do storytime quarterly. Fernando Diaz leads that and it's a great time. We bring a lot of people in. The last one had about 120 people, which is incredible for a Saturday to bring people into the firehouse. Santa K's coming up, if you guys don't know, it's the 21st of December. Santa Claus will be riding around and in the fire truck, so look forward to that. We're involved with the 9/11 Remembrance and the Lion's Vision screening, which was another great opportunity. We actually partnered with them at the open house and I went and helped screen some kids at Gold Hill Elementary. So, excuse me, Tegukay Elementary. It was a great time. And just some of the partnerships, obviously, the city departments, we can't do anything without each other's help and support. We could, but we wouldn't be nearly as effective. So I appreciate the partnerships we've got there. York County, we do a tremendous amount of stuff with York County Fire Service. Partnership there is continuing to grow. When we lost water, we actually bought one of their tankers, one of the county's tankers, to our fire station and manned it, just so we could make sure that we had water on the north end of the county. And it worked out very, very well and that's all because of relationships. Water events, partnerships there with emergency management, we do a tremendous amount with them and, you know, couldn't do it without them, just some of the assets that they bring to the table. Training, the Chiefs Association EMS is huge. We've got great relationships with EMS. The director and I sit down and have lunch several times, or have had lunch several times in the last six months. That's so important because of the training and the information interaction that we have and that we need for our citizens. Carolina Dive and Rescue, emergency management, we've talked about all those things. Currently involved in the Active Violence Task Force for the county. That's something that's new, something that's coming on board in the EMCI or Mass Casualty Incident Task Force. So a lot of things going on there. So, and you guys can read, just some of the state associations and things that we interact with, DHEC, ISO and those. So that's all I've got. You guys have any questions?
Any questions?
I got one real quick, chief. If you could talk just a little bit to the developments and the kinda progression overall of the volunteer program. Couple of years ago, we were kinda hit and miss with it and two separate sides and then over the last year or so, and since you've been on in the last eight months, there's been some solid steps in that direction, has there not?
We have. Relationships are really good right now. Communication's great. We share communication all the time. We've obviously used email to share information. We've got potentially five new volunteers. We're working through some background information now to try and get them processed through the city system. We've got two that continue to come back, so we're trying to really develop that process. We've got one that's potentially coming that's certified, so we're just continuing those efforts to try and reach out. Got some ideas on how to bring people in, to utilize them, to bring them in, we'll give them some training. And, you know, proximity is one thing, but if they're willing to come in and give us a weekend day, 12 hours, we're willing to give them some training and some turnout gear and start using them. But we've gotta have that commitment from them too. It's a two-way street. It's a tremendous amount of hours, it's about 200 hours to get a firefighter certified, just their initial certification. So the process is incredible, but if we've got people that are willing to do that and come and do it for free, that's great. What my goal is and you guys, I don't know that all of you know, we just hired one of our volunteers. I met him on my first day. The second day I came to work, we went to training together and that relationship's just actually continued and he is a super firefighter today. And, but that's the way that we wanna do it. We wanna train him, bring him in, train him as a volunteer and hire him on his staff, because that's a success.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, chief, I just, oh, sorry. You go ahead.
I was just gonna ask you if you could talk about the ISO rating and what it means like for people. Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Sorry, sorry. See, we're both, we're just thinking alike today. You can finish my sentence.
Nope, you go.
ISO, Insurance Services Organization, what it is, is it's based, our numbers actually reflect on the homeowner's insurance policies. So the better our number is, the better, the lower the insurance rate will be for the homeowner. The, we're in ISO Class 2 right now and I didn't have anything to do with that. The men and women that work with me at Tegukay Fire did that. That was already in place before I came. So we have a lot of goals that we have to meet in order to keep that. There's only 750 in the state of South Carolina, or excuse me, in the United States that are ISO 2. So we're trying to meet all those goals now. We're in the process. It's a long and drawn-out process and there's some things that have changed this year. So we're trying to try and get ahead of that. We'll have an ISO inspection next year. So we're trying to get ahead of the curve. Went to a conference about two months ago and a lot of that was focused on ISO changes. So we'll see where we end up at in the new year. Really, an ISO 3 for residential, for a homeowner is really good because rates are gonna be about the same between a 1 and a 3. For commercial, it's a big deal though. When we drop down below 3 each time we drop down, it's a significant savings in insurance for them.
Thank you.
Okay. Last chance, anybody? All right, thanks, chief. Next, we will go to the Sultan of Sludge Utilities, Philip Jolly. What a thing to be known for.
Stinky job, somebody has to do it. Good evening, how is everyone?
Good, how are you?
Great. Just to give you some highlights and we'll talk more about these as we go through some of the slides. Of course, LS number 12, we had to rework that, it is lift station number 12 down by hole number 5. We refabricated a sludge drying box, mayor, that's one of your favorite topics.
One of my favorites.
We had to refabricate one of those. Reason why is we pump sludge into that box, we let it dry, then we have a company come in and haul it off. So then we had some issues with that, it wasn't drying like it needed to. Got that refabricated back to operating standards and we're good to go there. We added some additional odor reduction devices in the Lake Ridge community. We continue, or at one time had several complaints. Those complaints are reducing, those devices are working. Then we had an emergency repair to our wastewater treatment plant number 3, our clarifier there, which is a, I'll have some pictures later on in the slides, I'll show you some pictures of that. It's a major component in the process that we do to clean up the wastewater before we put it back out into the lake. We completed our professional engineering report this year. We also completed our water and sewer rate study. We upgraded our SCADA system to a digital signal. Usually, or previously, it was analog signal, radio signal. During cold months and even hot months, we were having some communication issues with those. So once we upgraded to that digital signal, everything smoothed out. We had to add a new backup generator at wastewater treatment plant number 3 as well. And we did upgrades to several lift station panels throughout the city and of course, staff has been busy with leaks throughout all year. Here you see lift station number 12, which like I said is a hole number 5 on the pines. Previously, this was a can station, meaning that it was a confined space entry point that you had to go down approximately 30 to 40 feet where you had to access the pumps. Back around, let's see, February, it issued and that can station flooded. So there was no way to get in there. We had, of course, to pump that out, call a contractor to come in, look at the issue, damaged all the electrical in there, come to find out it was a hole, one of the lines that we had to repair to get that back up and going. We looked at the expense of that, it was gonna, those pumps were so old that we could not find one to replace the one that went bad. So we looked at all our costs and come to find out it was actually going to be a little bit cheaper to go with an above-ground station to rework it that way than it was to replace those pumps. That's what we did. You see on the bottom right picture, on the far left, that is the above-ground station there that basically we can access our pumps, our controls, everything from above ground. That way we don't have to send anyone down in there. So that means we can maintain it ourselves instead of having to call a contractor to come in and do those things. Plus, it's outfitted with new pumps, so that should last a good 20-plus years as we maintain those according to standards. Next slide, you'll see here, like I said, back in May, we had an emergency repair of this. We knew this was going downhill, but we was hoping, trying to buy some time, but then it quit on us and this is a major part of our treatment process, one of the last phases of the process before we disinfect and send that wastewater back out into the lake. Of course, here you see some pictures, we had to lower all the levels of the tanks around that and then we had a contractor come in and do a temporary repair to get us back up and going and that was about a week's process. In the meantime, while we were fixing this, we were able to send all flow, thanks to the upgrades that we'd done a few years ago, we were able to send all flow temporarily to one plant and maintain flow there. So that was a great thing that we were able to do according to our upgrades a few years ago. This past year, we completed our professional engineering report. That was a report that we had sent out for bids. We selected the qualified lowest bidder. They came in to look at our wastewater treatment facilities to see what we needed to do to get those back up to current standards and also how to better serve the community to make sure that we're forecasting out for 30, 40 years. These plants are 1971, so they're almost 49 years old. That's about 10 to 15 years past their life cycle, that they were just neglected to that point prior to the city taking over ownership. So we had this engineering report completed to look at the future to see what we need to do and of course, as things continue, hopefully we'll bring to council a proposal to move forward with getting those upgrades completed to those treatment plants. We had the comprehensive water and sewer rate study. This was on the heels of the professional engineering report. I wanted to get that professional engineering report in place and then look to see what our rates needed to be in case we did move forward with those upgrades to where we're making sure that we're banking the money that we need to bank to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do, in other words. So we had that completed, of course. You met with the representative King in here in July and August and decided to go with those new rates. Here we had a, again, this is a 1971 plant. You see in the far-left picture, you see the generator. That where if we lost power, that generator was supposed to keep that plant up and going. Well, back in late October of last year, early November, we started having issues with that. Of course, the same scenario we had with the lift station. This thing is so old that they don't make parts for it anymore, to be able to spend money on it, get it back up to where it needed to run, it was almost as cheap to get a new one and that's what we did. And you see that picture on the right where we replaced that generator with a new, up to date.
How long will the generator provide backup power for?
As long as we have fuel. Usually a 24-hour tank on that generator. As long as we have fuel. Uh, usually, a twenty-four-hour, um, tank on that generator. And then, of course, we did several upgrades to our panels at, uh, some of our wastewater, uh, lift stations. Here you see a picture of, of a panel that we upgraded with VFDs, that's variable frequency drives. In other words, we can control the speed of the pump, so, uh, it saves pump life, it saves energy, it saves energy cost, things of that nature. Uh, so that's what we're looking to move to as we continue to progress. And then, of course, staff has been busy with leaks, uh, this year. Here you see a comparison. Uh, this is total leak repairs for fiscal year, uh, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Uh, you see main lines in the light blue, and then service connections. That's the connections from the main to the, uh, water meter. There was a total of, um, sixty-six, um, service connections and six main repairs, uh, that staff completed just this year. In comparison to the year, four previous years that I've been here, you see, uh, we continue to, uh, go up on that scale.
Philip, what do you attest to that?
Aging infrastructure. Um, the issue that we're seeing in TCAD One versus TCAD Two. TCAD Two, of course, we know is the older system. TCAD One, while we had contractors put in a lot of that system, we didn't have, at that point in time, when they were putting in quality control inspectors, to make sure that they were actually putting in quali- quality materials. There was one street, I can't think of the name of it right, right off, but we've replaced four or five services just on that one street, due to faulty material. Uh, had an inspector been there, I doubt he would've caught that, uh, to begin with, but it sure would've helped, you know, kind of lessen, I guess, from those aspects, dealing with that back in the past. Uh, TCAD Two, of course, is old, um, aging infrastructure as well. It's a lot older than TCAD One. Uh, the issues we're running into there, where we find a lot of leaks, is they've already been repaired. And where they weren't repaired correctly, they were, a Band-Aid put on. What our crews are doing now is going back and replacing the line from the main to the meter, and oftentimes, putting a new meter box, upgrading a meter box, and of course, a new meter as well, so.
Thanks. Could you quickly speak to, I know that if your system detects a leak, you notify the residents. Um, so, how often are we catching it versus the resident catching it, or, just ballpark, obviously, you don't have specific?
Well, of course, the meter, uh, is a protection of, in other words, we read that meter, that's what the customer pays their bill off of.
Right.
So we're able to catch those. It's supposed to be a seventy-two-hour consistent leak. In other words, if we get those alerts, uh, we'll send a, um, staff out there to knock on the door, leave a door hanger if they're not home, to alert that customer that, hey, there's a potential that you have a leak. Uh, and that way, it lets them, notifies them versus waiting a whole month, prior to them getting their bill and getting a surprise. Now, that doesn't help on our end, from the meter to the main side. We have to, of course, investigate those through phone calls, when we get into City Hall, to see whether or not, what end it's on, pretty much.
Okay, thanks.
Makes sense.
Yep.
Is, uh, is there any way to track, or is, do you guys know when there's, um, a, a break of the line between the meter and like, the pipes going into someone's home? From like, do you know if, how many repairs? Are those, are those also increasing just as quickly as you're seeing increases in the, uh, the main lines?
I don't have that information, but from what I can recall, they are not. At one time, when we installed the new meters, uh, there were a significant amount, but that amount continues to reduce over time. Not looking at the numbers to, you know, give you accurate data, just thinking in my mind, because I look at that every morning. That's one of my tasks I do every morning. Uh, they have reduced significantly since we went to these meters, uh, because we've able, are able to detect them sooner, get that customer notified, and so they can get that issue corrected. But, again, that number has continued to decrease, according to my memory.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Um, major thing that I'm excited about is, of course, sanitary sewer overflow. As you say, we started, uh, I started tracking this when I came here in two thousand fifteen. And of course, those have, uh, continued to decrease over the years. It's always my goal not to have any, um, but, sure as world, I'll talk about that tonight, and sure, you know, something will happen, but hopefully not. But, uh, that's something that you can't predict. Uh, we do our best to try to maintain the lines, clean the lines. Uh, but there's always somebody flushing something that don't need to be flushed, that causes problems down the road.
During, during times of heavy rains, we're still hauling it away, though, aren't we?
Sometimes, uh, depending on the lake level. The lake level has, uh, plays a lot, um, into that factor. In other words, if the lake level's full, we get over an inch of rain, typically, we have to haul a lot of that water, because the plants are just not able to handle it. Um, if the lake level's, uh, down, like it was this past summer, typically, we can handle two to three inches of rain, and it not bothers us, because a lot of that rain soaking into the ground's going into the lake. But when the lake level's full, and the ground's saturated, we get heavy rains, uh, we will typically have to pump and haul. We do have a holding basin at Plant Four that we can transfer some into there. Uh, but again, if it gets significant rainfall, two or three days back to back, and the lake is already full, we'll have to pump and haul.
Are you able to see, like, what, um, like, is there a commonality between what you see people putting, um, like flushing, that they shouldn't be, that we could do, like, some education around, or is there anything consistent from that standpoint? Got to get to, in the...
Yes and no. We, uh, we do some education, uh, usually twice a year, we're sent out a flyer. Uh, we post things on, uh, our Facebook. Rags, of course, you know, the flushable wipes, uh, they say are flushable. Well, they are flushable. You can flush a remote control, um, for a TV, but that don't mean you should. Uh, but, the thing is, they don't break down like toilet paper does. And so therefore, it, it gets hung up in the, in the, um, pumps and things of that nature. If there's solids already on a buildup in the line, they get hung up on that. Uh, we have not a lot of trouble with roots, but there are some occasional roots, cause problems, uh, things of that nature. But, like I said, with the workforce, uh, that we have, the staff has done a real good job of going out, maintaining those lines, cleaning those lines, and things of that nature. Grease is another problem, which, uh, we've seen a reduction of grease, as well with those education factors that we've been, uh, putting out to the public.
Awesome, thanks.
Uh, just a few employee achieve- achievements over the past year. Of course, Antonio Maturro, our Assistant Utilities Director, obtained his Level C and B Collection System License. Sheldon Russell, uh, one of our Field Operations Foremen, obtained his Level C in Water Distribution. And that's what you have to have in order to operate the system through DEHEC standards, is at least a Level C. Uh, we've had one of our team leaders, Jeremy Franklin, obtain both, his Level D, where his Level D in both water and wastewater collection. And then one of our wastewater treatment operators, um, trainees, uh, obtained his Level D. And we've had seven new employees start their career with the city of Tugay K, out of a total of sixteen, including myself, for the whole department. Uh, so, uh, and we still have two new opening, or two open positions, so, um, that's quite a feat, uh, for those employees to obtain those tasks, to be able to train those employees on what they need to do, and to tackle those problems that we face on a daily basis. Any questions?
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, next is Public Works in Stormwater with Tim Gillett.
Good evening, Tim Gillett, Operations Director. We're gonna be talking about Public Works in Stormwater. This is our year-end review. Um, we're gonna go straight to the good stuff. We got yard waste recycling. We've processed seven hundred and twenty tons of yard debris in the last year, which made a hundred and twenty tons of mulch, which we put around the city and help our beautification and erosion problems. We did some street resurfacing last year. Uh, we did two thousand six hundred and eighty-nine linear feet of street, uh, was resurfaced with the Sea Fund program. That was Old Cove, Greenview Court, and a majority, probably eighty percent of Seven Coves Drive. Uh, we did some street repair. Uh, we did repaint the, uh, center line on Windjammer. Uh, and we did some curb replacement on Territ, Greenview, Seven Coves, and Old Cove. Uh, we repaired several areas on, uh, Scotch Pine, Marquesas, Titleway, Molochai, Marianna, Diamond Head, and Blue Bell. Uh, and we repaired potholes as needed all around in every city-owned street. Uh, we did some sidewalk work. Uh, we replaced fifty sections of damaged sidewalk. We extended this, uh, sidewalk on Wimward with a handicap access. Uh, we also repaired damaged sidewalk at the clubhouse, uh, and added a small piece of sidewalk, uh, both in front of the clubhouse and over by the, uh, what my guys call the hot dog stand, which is the turnhouse. Uh, we also repaired steps and sidewalk in the back entrance to the elementary school. Uh, we did a lot of landscaping. That's one of the things that we do on a regular basis. The big project we had was the police department, which y'all were involved in. Uh, we installed all the irrigation and the landscaping, uh, there. Uh, we repaired and stained the fence at the old boat lot, so it looks a whole lot better. Uh, and we completed the initial grading phases for the new Trailhead Park. So, all that mulch, we spread, not only the mulch we had, but some of the mulch we had from last time. Uh, so we spread over three hundred yards of mulch on city property. We pruned five hundred and sixty street trees. Did a small landscape project on Manila Bay, and we removed twenty-five dead and hazardous trees around the city in different areas. Now, this is the big leaf truck that's out there now. Last year, we picked up twelve thousand cubic yards of leaves during our last leaf collection cycle. That's a lot of leaves, guys. We do, we do stormwater repair, too. Uh, so, we did stormwater projects on Kiwi, Pickaran, Tenura, and Spanish Wells, which included pipe inlets and outfalls. Uh, we did some other just out, inlet and outfall repair on Pickaran, Golf Course Cove Number Four, Gulf U Crest, Spanish Wells, Point Clear, and Gladiola is a project that we're, we're in process with. And I believe that's all we got. Any questions?
Thanks, Tim. Um, you often get, just like Philip, um, not the credit that you're due, so thank you for everything that you do. Um, I know that you repaired several sidewalks this year. Do you have any plans for sidewalks next year at all?
We have an ongoing sidewalk repair list. Uh, some of that's gonna be replacement, some of it may be grinding. Just because of tree roots and other, uh, environmental situations, we'll say, that, uh, make the sidewalk, get in disrepair and heave and, and move. Uh, so, yeah, we, we're trying to keep an eye on that, and we do have a list.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tim. All right, let's move to item number two, public comments. Cornell, you're the man. Coming up, state your name, address, and blood type.
Good after, good evening. My name is Cornell Sutton, and, uh, I've been a resident of Tugay Case and going on twenty years now. I live in the Anchorage Development. The reason I'm here is because I'm at, I'm at the end with the deer. They're destroying my property. Uh, this has been ongoing. I've, I've gone to the city, I've talked to Charlie, I've been knowing Charlie ever since he, uh, was hired by the city with the Recreation Department. I've gone to him several times in frustration. Last week, I talked to Dave, uh, about, uh, I was in the yard trying to shoo them away, and, uh, I had a buck, there was a buck with a full rack, and he looked like a elk. He charged me. And that's one of the reasons, main reason I'm here, and I've never been so scared in my life. Uh, what do you realize, and I think right now, there, it's, uh, mating season, and the bucks, there's quite a few bucks. I've, I've observed a group during, during, uh, when they're not in mating season, the, 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 the males, they, they kind of roam in a group. I observed about fifteen to twenty of them. And then the females, and, and the little ones, the fawns, and, and the, uh, young females, they're all in a group. And, uh, they're in mating season, it's mating season, and the, the bucks are in rut. And they're crazy. They'll do anything. And I'm surprised right now that the city has not, uh, had a incident where somebody's gotten seriously injured, and it's getting to that point. And talking to the city officials, uh, I, I'm being told that, uh, that you haven't, we needed, we haven't done a count. Uh, and we need to do an official count of how many heads there are. Well, you don't have to. You can just come to my neighbor, you just come to my yard, you can just follow me home, and you can just start counting. They laying in the yard, and what, and they laying in the yard, and, and, and the frustrating part is, it's hard to shoo them away, because people are feeding them, and they're wild animals. They're wild animals, and they're becoming a nuisance. Uh, they're destroying property. Uh, I've got poop everywhere. I can't, I can't cut my yard. Uh, there's poop on my sidewalk, uh, like I said, the, uh, the bucks, uh, are pawing the, the ground, leaving bare spots like four-by-five spots, uh, in, I guess, sexual frustration or whatever it is, but, but, you know, they're doing it. And the, the, the problem is, is that people, some people are feeding them. Like, my neighbor across the street, he's got a salt block. He's got a salt block in his yard where he feeds them.
At the stop sign.
Yeah, at the stop sign. And, uh, I, I want to keep peace. I've been here for twenty years, and I've been law-abiding, and, and I want to, I want to keep it that way. I don't want to causing a problem like that, get attitude with him or whatever, so. So, it, you know, it's, 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 it's just, I've never seen it like this before in my life, but like I said, I've been here for twenty years, and, and I was here when, uh, they, they had the coyote problem, which is still got, and it's gonna be even worse. Uh, the, I'd sit here and listen to the game wardens for the state, uh, South Carolina National Resources, and you said the reason we got coyotes is because of the deer, the fawns. They prey upon the fawns, the baby deer. And with the numbers I see now, I suspect, you know, it would probably be at least twenty fawns, um, in the late spring that are born. Uh, it, it is, it is just terrible, and I'm at ends with, that, that, they're a nuisance, they're destroying my property. And I just sit here and I listen. I listened to the, uh, what, the utility guy? He said that, uh, s- he had three complaints about the smell, sewer smell, and they did something about it. And I'm here to ask you to, to do the same responsibility, is to do something about these deer that they, you know, I, you know, I, I have a right to protect my property, but at the same time, I'm a responsible individual, and I'm coming to you and deploying that, you know, do something about them. And whether you know it or not, if you do a little research, they carry about twenty-one diseases. One of them is, one of them is called, it's not mad cow disease, but it's a form of it, and it's called chronic, uh, wasting disease. And humans get that. So I'm surprised that nobody with the way people are domesticating them and trying to mingle with them, that, 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 and then you know, everybody knows Lyme disease. That's, that's, that ain't no, you know, I mean, just, uh, headache-type, uh, medical condition. It's, it, it can be serious. And then accidents. I'm sure there's been accidents wherein people have got hit. Uh, but fast forward, I, I come before you, and pretty much to give you constructive notice that, uh, you know, if you don't, if you don't live up to your responsibility and help me protect my property, I'll go elsewhere. And, uh, I, I'm, I'm just frustrated. I, I just, and then, and then, like I said, you, you don't have to hire a consultant. Just follow me home. Just follow me home, and just, you just count them. And Dave can attest to what I'm talking about. It's, it's just terrible. I got thirteen steps going up to my house. I, I've, I, uh, give you a little background. When I first came to Tugay K, back in the day, when everybody was into yards and all of that, I won a beautification award for all of Tugay K four times. I think I need to pat myself on the back, that, that's a feat. Four times. Four times, I won the beautification, and I'm retired now, and my therapeutic relief is my yard, my flowers, but I can't, I can't do it with the deer. I'm afraid to walk in the yard because it ticks, because they lay down, you know? And I just put out, what, maybe five? I put five hundred dollars into my overseeding, and it looks like that what they're doing is they lick my seeds up off the ground, and then they're grazing off the little baby grass. But anyway, I think I've said enough.
Yeah, we understand. If y'all don't know where Cornell lives, it's, you're going, passing Rundy Park, and you're coming up to the traffic circle, pretty much the first street, the first road, the first house that you can see, is Shannon's house, and then you're right next to him. So, yeah, we pass by there at night all the time and see them all laying down in Shannon's yard, which is your yard, same thing.
Yeah. And like I said, if you want, if you don't have to do no, as Charlie said, we need to do a, get consulting to do a count, you just come out there and count. And then, like I said, in the simplest terms, if it's one, that's a nuisance, or is doing property damage, that's one too many, and you're obligated to control them. It's just, it's no less than a wild dog, a dog off its leash, you're obligated to control them.
All right, thanks, Cornell.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, we had this problem with the coyotes two years ago, was it? Did we trap last year? It was two years. Was it last year? And we all sat up here and predicted exactly what happened. We said, we take away the coyotes, you're gonna get more deer next year, and sure enough, here they come. The trouble with the coyotes last time is they were taking away small pets, jumping in backyards. There was some, there was a lady and two kids that were coming from the grocery store in the evening, and they couldn't even get out of their car because there was two coyotes in the yard, so that was more of a, you know, an immediate human problem that we thought we had at the time, and I think a gentleman came in about his pets being taken, and I can remember all the cats, when I first moved to TK twenty years ago, I could hear cats all night, you know, fighting each other. I don't hear that anymore because the coyotes are getting them. So, it's constantly a roller coaster. We got too many coyotes, and we take that out, and the next year, two years, there's too many deer. And we're more limited on what we can do with deer than with, believe it or not, with coyotes, right? We've got, we did a study a while back and said that our topography and our acreage was right in line with how many deer we had. Now, I'm noticing more rabbits than I've ever seen before, and of course, more deer. But even if we do do a study, what can we do about it? Are we, we're not allowed to trap, we're not allowed to hunt?
SEDNR has what's called an urban deer management program that if we apply for it, then you, it's a type of, basically it's hunting. You use their sharpshooters, people that are on the SEDNR sharpshooter list. You identify the area in which they can work, and they can hunt over food plots, they can hunt with spotlights at night, basically all the things they don't allow regular deer hunters to do, they could do right here in the city. That's the only thing that SEDNR will do, will allow you to do.
Okay, so how do we initiate that? What do we have to do to get that started?
File permits with SEDNR, if that's what you want to do. We probably need to update the deer management plan, but I mean, you're talking about hunters with rifles in the city, sharpshooting deer. That is the only thing that SEDNR will let you do when it comes to the deer.
Yeah, we can't trap and relocate them.
That is correct.
Somebody even said something about birth control pill, feeding them, birth control something.
No, they won't let you do that either.
Somebody said, put it in their corn or something. I said, we've looked into that, nope, can't do it.
Are there rules about, I'm sure there are, about feeding deer and like the salt licks?
It's discouraged, but the last time I looked at it, and I'll double-check again because it's been a couple of years, it's not illegal, but they do discourage it in urbanized areas. But I do not believe it is against state law to do that, but I can, we can most certainly double-check that.
Can we do an ordinance?
I would think so, but I'd have to look, let us look into it a little bit and come back. Yep.
At least get a little bit more strict on the feeding part of it. Anybody else have any comments or questions? All right, Cornell, thanks.
You can trackalize them and relocate them?
Nope. Who else wants them? Who would want to relocate their deer to us? You know, same with?
Well, I gotta deliver them.
Yeah, we've been.
I gotta protect my property.
We've been doing this for four years. It comes up.
I can't rely on the city to do something about it.
Yeah, we'll work on it, I'll get back with you and see what we can come up with. All right, let's see. Next is the approval of minutes. Council, you've had a chance to look at the minutes. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes? Seeing none, minutes stand as printed. Okay, committee appointments. TK Forever Foundation, did everybody vote already?
Yes, sir.
We had four people sign up to be on the Forever Foundation. We appreciate you four voting. This was a very difficult vote to take because everybody's very well qualified. Do we have the results yet?
Yes, sir. Your top two nominees for council's consideration are Pete Chirikazi and Caroline Hasty.
Say that first name again?
Pete Chirikazi.
I think I know Pete, and Hasty. Yeah, he lives, yeah, he's got deer problem like we do.
So, I submit those names for council's consideration.
So, do we have to say his last name?
Pete C.
I'd like to make a motion as published by the city manager for the two nominations for the.
TK Forever.
What was it? TK Forever Foundation.
Second.
So, have a second. Time to vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous. Congratulations to Pete and Ms. Hasty. Okay, item number five, committee reports. TK Forever Foundation with Heather.
Okay, so TK Forever met, this is not right, it says October seventh, but it was November seventh. We had a discussion, recommendation of new candidates. Obviously, we just voted, and so those congratulations to Caroline and Pete. Sponsorship subcommittee updates, so they are working on finalizing a new sponsorship package. Similarly, like when you go, when a sponsorship is asked for, let's say, the American Cancer Society, they have an entire packet that they take to go to these corporate sponsors that gives all the what, where, why, who, and some detailed information. So, they finalized a sponsorship packet so that they could take that to their sponsors. They updated, this updated the sponsorship options, benefits, and expanded the park description and impacts. They identified corporate partners or anyone over fifteen thousand and above, and community sponsors fifteen thousand and below, or fourteen thousand below. They have twenty, identified twenty-two prospective corporate partners, which they will be targeting in the coming months. They're working on a Kataba Park video voiceover, so they're updating that video currently. Most of you probably saw that when we rolled that out earlier this year. Obviously, you probably also saw we were scheduled to have bark for Kataba Park this past Saturday due to weather. We had to postpone that. The tentative date for that event is March twenty-eighth, and at this point, almost all of the sponsors and vendors have recommitted to that new date. And I think that's about it. They have a proposal currently with Atrium Health that they're working on, so they'll be meeting with them very soon, and everything else is kind of rolling along in the works. Economic development did not meet this month due to the forum, the candidate forum, it was the same night in the same room. So, we were scheduled to our end of November this coming Monday, but I'm assuming we'll get some updates here very soon in executive session. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions? Planning Commission with Alicia.
All right, so the Planning Commission met on November eighth. There was a couple of things on the agenda. One, of course, the comprehensive plan update. A key takeaway is that the land use element is being significantly updated to reflect a new focus on use of three new mixed-use zoning styles to drive development and redevelopment. This was really driven by a lot of the public outreach and feedback process that the Planning Commission has gone through over the past year, through surveys and receiving public input, a mapping exercise, those things. So, I'm really looking forward to seeing those in the new comp plan update. They also discussed the timeline, so in this past Thursday, was it, I believe, there was a public drop-in for folks to come in and take a look at the proposed comp plan update and review various aspects of that, so that was well-attended, and thanks to those on council that were able to attend that. Presentation of the final plan and adoption of a resolution for council, the Planning Commission will be discussing at their next meeting, which is on Monday, December second. And then, following that, there will be a joint public hearing with city council on December sixteenth, here in this room, and then the second reading of that will be on our, in our meeting, I'm assuming on January second, since looking at the calendar, that's our only time we're meeting in January. So, lots of work that's gone into this, so please take some time to read through that and provide us any additional input that you might have. They also talked about the work plan for calendar year 2020, some of the things that are on that, closer ties with the Economic Development Committee, which Heather and I met this past week to start thinking about and talking through. So, thank you, Heather, for that. Adding community outreach requirements to new development agreements and major new projects, discussing adding architectural standards for future development redevelopments, environmental sustainability standards, adding those to ordinances or future development agreements. And lastly, reviewing, review of current overlay districts and establishment of ties with York County, especially in those corridors along Gold Hill Road and South Carolina 160. And council, I know I mentioned this at last meeting, but if you do have anything you'd like the Planning Commission to take a look at as well, be happy to pass that along to our chairman and add that to their work plan for the next year.
Alicia, is the bike and ped plan, is that part going in as part of the comp plan that we'll review and finalize?
I believe it is, yes.
Yes, okay. Perfect, thanks.
That it? Any other questions? All right, let's go to item six A, which is new business. This is the introduction, first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter ten, Article one, Section ten dash four of the Code of Ordinances for the City of TK as it relates to buildings and building regulations in the City of TK. The international building codes are updated every three years, and South Carolina Building Codes Council has the authority to establish the statewide effective date of the new additions and to direct each applicable jurisdiction to adopt the codes as authorized. This proposed ordinance will automatically adopt all future additions of the codes, including the optional administrative first chapters in alignment with the state directives. Are there any questions? Any state, any questions from the public? All right, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter ten, Article one, Section ten dash four of the Code of Ordinances for the City of TK as it relates to buildings and building regulations in the City of TK.
I have a motion from Alicia, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Ryan Richard. Okay, time to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous. Six B is adoption of the 2020 schedule of regular council meetings. By law, the city is required to post the 2020 council meeting dates and notice it to the media, and we usually meet the third Monday of the month. We're making a couple of changes because of holidays. We do January, February different every year because of President's Day and Martin Luther King's birthday. So, and because we usually do a January second every two years to swear in the new council members, we're gonna do that on January second, and we're gonna go ahead and do our whole city council meeting for the month because I'm going away on a cruise for the whole month. So, there we go. The February meeting will be the day after the holidays, so it'll be February eighteenth, and then the July meeting will be July thirteenth. All the other days will be the third Monday of the month. Any questions? All right, let's make a motion. Somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the 2020 schedule of regular council meetings as presented.
Have a motion by Mayor Protem, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Gus Machinas. Signify your vote. All raise your hand for.
Aye.
All against, it's unanimous. All right, let's see. City manager report, item number seven, Charlie Fundaberk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Let's see, that one's already taken care of, the bark for Kataba Park. City offices are gonna be closed on Thursday and Friday of next week for Thanksgiving. Our police department has gone through the accreditation renewal process, and we hope to announce good news on that at the December council meeting. Big thank you to Lieutenant Buddy Spence for his efforts on leading that. It was a very long, grueling process. Friday, December sixth was in the proclamation, but just want to make sure that's on everybody's schedule. That is Arbor Day. We'll be at Trailhead Park at ten a.m., and we'll be planting a tree for the All Play Together Board. Saturday, December seventh is our annual tree lighting at the pavilion, followed by a visit with Santa in the lower level of the Glennon Center. Shore Club's gonna be doing carriage rides that evening, and there's also going to be a candy cane hunt this year, starting here at the lower level. Macaroni Kids is putting that on, start at three o'clock for the little ones. And I can go through all of this if council wants, but Katie and I had the opportunity to go to the International City Managers Conference back in October, and it was in Nashua, and I tell you, it was absolutely amazing conference. Sessions that we went to included delivering great results, you have, from your vision and strategic plan, building brands and creating cultures of servant leadership, infusing resident voices in planning process, moving forward with a smart communication strategy, attracting tourism and following your brand, podcasting your story. Big leaps with small budgets and personal strategic planning were just some of the ones that we went to. The keynote speakers, there were several, but two that were just absolutely phenomenal. Leonard Brody, who's a venture capitalist and author from, I believe, the Toronto area. He's also a media commentator. And then Bonnie St. John, who may be one of the most amazing women that I think I've ever heard speak. She's a Paralympic medalist and downhill skier. She has served on councils for both, for former presidents Clinton, Bush, as well as Obama. She's an author and public speaker, and just absolutely fantastic. It was a joy listening to her talk. You know, a lot of takeaways, a lot of what we focused on was strategic plans, planning in general, and really connecting to the plans. And we're about to, I'm starting a process, actually, on Wednesday this week with some of our identified leaders that aren't in supervisory positions. And, you know, we went through 2018 with council and did some strategic planning, and then our department heads took that and, you know, built initiatives and things of that nature. The thing that we missed out, you know, we did a survey, and we got some input, you know, what departments are in what facilities, you know, are top priority for you as a resident, but we never really connected the rest of staff to that plan, the people that are actually gonna implement it. You know, so, and it's funny, Katie heard at one of her sessions, you know, we're not asking them for buy-in because buy-in means we're trying to convince them. You know, we want them to take ownership and be a part of that plan. So, we're gonna do a series of meetings with that group, that's gonna roll into our department head treat that I do once a year, and then that's, and then from there, we're actually gonna be doing a few exercises with TK Connect Liaisons, since they come from literally all parts of the city. And culminate that with a budget planning workshop, not a budget workshop, but a planning workshop with city council. But a lot of what we really focused on as we were up there was economic development and how our strategic plan and branding can work towards that. So, it was a great, great few days at the conference. We had a blast with it and learned a lot, learned a lot. You know, it's always good to surround yourself with people from literally all over the world and to hear them talk about, oh, traffic in my town is horrible, and, you know, our infrastructure can't keep up, and a lot of things we hear here. You know, we are not unique, not TK Kay and not the Fort Mill Township. Everybody has their issues, and a lot of them seem to be very similar. So, it was a really, really good time and learned a lot there. If at any point anybody from council wants to schedule time to sit down with Katie and I to dig deeper into this, love to, love to schedule it. It was, it was a great conference. And with that, I will conclude my report.
Right, thank you. We'll go to council comments. We'll start with Ryan Richard.
I'll be quick. Thanks, everybody, for coming out and voting. It's an honor and a privilege for four more years, so thanks for that. What, we had above-average turnout comparative to other cities and towns. What, we had a above-average turnout comparative to, to other cities and towns around the area, so, uh, your voices were heard, and so I'd like to say thank you for both myself and Gus. You'd have gotten my vote too, buddy. Well, you did, all right. But, uh, that's all I have. I'm easy.
Alicia.
Great. Uh, just another shout out to Susan Brett and Kara with COG for their work on the comp plan and, and really making that a public process. And thanks to the residents for coming out, um, to learn more about all the work that was done, um, and provide public feedback. And also, thank you to the Planning Commission, uh, for all the work and effort that they've put into that plan as well. Um, one thing that I did hear on Thursday night that I did want to mention and ask the city manager if he could look into it, I heard that there's a parking space right at the entrance of the trail at Trailhead Park that becomes a, a really tough turn for people utilizing the trail. And, um, a, a request that came up, I guess, a couple of times, a couple of different groups, was if we could look at that parking space and see if there's any potential to either eliminate that and help that curb going into the trail.
We're going to, our plan right, uh, Susan Brett made me aware of it, uh, Friday. Uh, our plan right now is when we restructure that parking lot to add the additional, uh, handicap spaces.
Cool.
We're just going to eliminate that. Uh, we don't have the funding to widen that turn and, and things of that nature, but we'll just block it off. The other thing we're going to do is put wheel stops in, in those parking spots, so that they don't pull all the way up to the curb.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's going to keep the, push those bumpers back two feet to where they're not hanging over the sidewalks, so those are, uh, those plans are in place.
Okay, great, perfect. Thank you so much. Um, I want to also thank all the candidates that ran, and a big congratulations, of course, to, uh, to Gus and Ryan on your, on your wins. Um, last but not least, um, I hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving. We sure have a lot to be thankful for in, in TK, and I'm thankful for living here and, um, all the great people here we get to work with and live with and play with. Thanks.
Gus?
Mine'll be brief too. Um, congratulations to Ryan Richard, or was it Richards? I can't remember from the other day. But, um, all of those names were butchered pretty well. Um, uh, thank you, TK. Um, it's really, uh, makes you feel good when people trust you, um, to, to, you know, look at some of the things that we look at, and, you know, congratulations for sixteen percent turnout in off-year election. I think Rock Hill was four percent, so it says a lot about our city and the people and how engaged and involved that, that we all are, and I'd like to encourage that to keep happening. Um, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. This is one of my favorite holidays, probably just because I love to cook and I love to eat even more. That's about it for me.
Well, Gus and I are planning on switching places in January, but I kind of like Ryan's idea better, and I'm going to go first next time, so that I don't have to, like, always go last and, and pick up the, the slack here, so I will repeat probably everything everybody already said, but um, congrats to Ryan and Gus, um, well deserved, um, looking forward to serving with you for the next couple of years. And thank you to Walt, um, Carmen, and Tammy, um, thank you for running. It takes a lot of guts, and it gives, it's a lot of effort to put into campaigning, and it's not easy, so thank you for putting yourselves out there. Um, I appreciate all the department heads for giving their overviews of their different departments and updates. Um, we really appreciate the time that all staff puts into what they do each day, um, but, but we really appreciate it, and based on the initiatives and the things that we've seen, um, just this year alone, you guys are, are really, um, you know, putting your best foot forward and moving the needle, so we appreciate that. Um, thank you to Susan, Kara, and all of the Planning Commission for all of your hard work on the comp plan. I'm really looking forward to putting that into place, um, and especially with the land use and economic development. Thanks to the Assistant City Manager and the City Manager for the IC, their, going to the ICMA conference for their feedback, and I'm really looking forward to the implementation of all that you laid out today. Um, and last but not least, happy Thanksgiving. If you're traveling, please be safe, and we will see you in December.
All right, thank you. Of course, I always get to go last, so I don't get to change seats for a while, but, so, you know, sorry for being redundant, but congratulations to the two that won, and thanks to the people who signed up and ran. You see, realize how much fun it is to campaign, um, and go out and meet everybody and talk to them. And happy Thanksgiving, everybody, and we'll wait to see you again in a month. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session. Second by Gus Machinas, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we are now in executive session.